Okay, I would say at seven o'clock, I'd call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, March 7th. Tonight, and before we start our agenda, we have three public hearings. The first public hearing, Kim, could you read the notice, please?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for Hicks Neder Companies LLC, 8727 Lewiston Road, Batavia, New York, for a major subdivision and retail building for Tractor Supply Store. This is located on approximately a 52-acre parcel, 8 dot dash one dash seven in the Town of Batavia, Genesee County, New York. The land is zoned commercial. Said hearing will be held at the Batavia Town Hall, 38-33 West Main Street Road, Batavia, New York, on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, at which time all interested persons will be heard. If you cannot attend, you may send your comments and concerns to the chairman at kjesinski@townofbatavia.com before the hearing. A copy of the application is on file at the Town Hall for review by order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board, Kathleen Jezinski, Chairman.
Hey, as with all of our public hearings, everyone will have the opportunity to speak. We ask that you limit it to just a few minutes unless you've got really some important things you want to tell us. But I'd ask you to stand up, give your name and address for the secretary, and then go ahead and give us your comments. So who would like to go first today? Is there anyone here, first of all, that wishes to speak in this public hearing? This is for the Tractor Supply subdivision? Yes?
Um, can we see the layout of where the Tractor Supply's going to be, where the road's going to be? We're Terry and Art Marshall.
Yes, that's a good idea. And you're here tonight. And for the minutes you are?
Terry Marshall, 8271 Lewiston Road.
Thank you. You can have a state and he'll review this, and then you can get up and speak again. All right.
My name is Peter Sorangi. I'm the attorney for the Tractor Supply project. I believe somebody said they wanted to see the layout of the project, so I don't know where I can put this where you can all see it.
The planning board has reviewed this already, and Ken's already looked at this. So this is for the public.
Yeah, so just to give some background, there are five approvals that we need from different town boards so far. So I represent Tractor Supply, but for this, we're looking at the entire property. So for this project to move forward with the Tractor Supply, we needed a one or two area variances, which is only part of appeals granted. We needed what's called a negative declaration for secret environmental review, which this board did grant. We needed a preliminary plat, which basically said, we've looked at this and we're okay with the layout of the five subdivision or four subdivision lots. So then we're here for final plat. And if that's approved, then next, a couple of weeks, we'll be here for site plan, for the actual Tractor Supply. So it's about 60 acres of land or so. Lot one is right here. The only lot that has any planned development is Tractor Supply, which is on lot two, right here. Okay, so it doesn't join Route 63. There's a new road that's going to be put in, and that's how you'll access the Tractor Supply. These other lots are for future development. When that happens, when somebody comes up with a proposal for the development, they'll have to come in front of this board and then other boards and go through that process. You'll be notified. So tonight, we're really just talking about Tractor Supply. However, because this is all one property, we have to divide it kind of for the future. So it's looking like four big lots, and that's all we have right now. One public road, which eventually will connect over to Federal Drive. So I can, I know the board has seen this six times. I can answer any questions if the board wants me to.
Yes.
Do you want to take a picture?
Are you, yeah. Help yourself.
Wait a minute, look, one at a time in name and address, and you already gave yours, so go ahead and stand up.
Yeah, because I want to see in relation to where our houses are and where has it been rezoned? I mean, is it rezoned right up?
It hasn't been rezoned. Zoning is the same as it's on Everback.
It's already zoned commercial.
It was already zoned.
Oh, you know this.
It's been that way for quite a while.
Yeah. The use doesn't have to match the zonings from the old use, so.
My question for you was very simple. Is the lawyer?
I need your name, sir.
For the appeal board, thank you.
Sir, your name and address, please?
They need your name.
We need to do this orderly so that we can keep our minutes. Okay?
I am Ron Schmidt, and the caretaker of the church. When the lawyer was here for the appeal board, he promised the church and myself a copy of that picture. He took down our names, our addresses and everything, and we have not got it.
That was my partner, Sean Hopkins.
Yes, well.
I apologize if that happened. This is sort of a.
I want the full one so we can read it.
You want the full-size one?
Yes, because I cannot read the measurements on there.
You can walk out of it tonight. Okay?
I have one of those ready. I downloaded it.
Okay. You can take this with you tonight. I think it's on the website, but you're right, it's very tough to see on a computer screen.
That is, we told him that that night, and he told us that we could have the cop's same copy that the planning board got. Took down the addresses and didn't do anything about it.
Well, he was filling in for me. He should have told me that. I didn't, I never heard that, so.
Yeah, I wish you would have called me. I could have given you mine. But that's okay, you'll get one tonight.
Yeah, you can take this with you.
My problem is our minister is very worried about it. And I can't feed him anything unless somebody else does.
Understood.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Bromley. My wife, Tanny, we live at 8234 Lewiston Road. My concern is the driveway that's coming out. It's not the building itself. So when the roadway comes out, as we're coming down to try to get into our driveway, traffic flies from Batavia down the hill. It's kind of a blind spot, and I'm worried about people making your right-hand turn into there because it's right over the crest of the hill as you're coming down the hill. And also people coming to try to get out and make right or left-hand turns. We've lived there for probably eight to nine years, and it just doesn't seem feasible that a road could be in that area. I'm not sure if there's been any studies done, potential studies of how much traffic is going through there, what time of the day. Does there need to be a light which would probably make things different there? But truly, I think we need to look at the safety of everybody that uses that road, as well as the people that are going to come out from the new road.
So this is, so this road, just in terms of the driveway, this is a public road that's going to be coming in there. So it's a public road. There has been a study that's been submitted to New York State DOT because ultimately DOT has to approve the road onto Route 63 because it's a curb cut onto a state highway. So that will, that will have to occur.
Whereabouts is that road? It's conjunctions of the church parking lot. Where we live, we're directly across from the church, and there have been multiple accidents.
Okay, the church is across from the yard right next to you? That's beyond the field? The road's going to butt right out to that?
Yeah, so there's a lot of accidents right there. I mean, at least in the nine years we've been there, there's probably at least 10 or 12 accidents right in the church parking lot and our driveway, which is where around
It is up to the DOT.
And Dr. Hancock told us.
It's up to DOT if they want to have a traffic light there. At this point, like I said, all that's going in is Tractor Supply. And the way Tractor Supply is, as opposed to some retail or other commercial uses, think of a movie theater, everybody's in and out at the same time, restaurants similar to that, this is really spread out throughout the day. There's not a peak out there.
Just to oppose that, once there's a road there from Home Depot, that's going to become a way that people are going to cut the intersection going down.
To not have to go past the Batavia.
This road will end here. This road will stop here, and there'll be a temporary turnaround in phase one. But phase two will not occur until there's some plans proposed for this. My assumption, just from doing this work, type of work for 20 years, is that the DOT will not require a traffic light just for this. They're going to wait and see the rest of what's going to come in here. Before that's built, they probably would require one. So right now, it's just the traffic, the Tractor Supply store.
I would ask that the planning board consider the safety of that. Just in my opinion, living there, traffic flies through that area, and it's going to be tough to make those turns.
Yes.
Joe Wilson, 303 Lewiston Road. We live a little bit further close to the city, but the traffic, I totally agree, is a vulnerable on Lewiston Road pretty much any time of the day. To pull out of the driveway, it's not unusual to hear anywhere's from 10 to 18, 20 cars that you're waiting for. Friends from Oakfield are just appalled at trying to make any kind of a turn off of Lewiston, going to the left. So this is going to impede traffic somewhat. But you also have to look, and I wrote a letter to the town back in July, I never got a reply, about the traffic totally on Lewiston Road. It's a two-lane highway. It's residential at the highway. The commercial is all behind. And when you have, like, West Main Street is a four-lane highway, all commercial, and traffic's very quick there. Well, they're putting, creating on Lewiston Road for the residents and for anybody going up Lewiston Road toward Oakfield Medina, coming from Oakfield Medina, there's tractor trailers, there's farm traffic, there's all kinds of traffic. And I know Mr. Mountain said back in July that he didn't see that there was any DOT problems, just leave it like it was. But it's not for the residents or people that travel up and down Route 63. It's a state highway. It's very, very busy. It's generally very dangerous to try to pull out. And not having a left-hand arrow at Veterans Memorial Drive in front of Applebee's is one of the big problems there. If the town could in any way put more arrows to direct traffic, because it's just going to get worse. You're creating a problem here with traffic. The commercial development, we've known for years it was going to happen, but they're not addressing the traffic and safety issues of the residents of the Town of Batavia and the surrounding towns that use that road. Thank you.
And just to, when you say the town should put left turns or whatnot, typically that's going to be DOT in the jurisdiction. So it's a state, so maybe you should send a letter to the state, I would suggest. But we, well, I know.
Kathy, if I could give a quick.
Yes, please do.
We are, there's two traffic studies going on, one for Tractor Supply, it's part of the site plan review process. And there are, the other thing that Town Board has authorized is a corridor study for all of Lewiston Road from Route 5 up to the thruway, because it is, it is increasing. They haven't been able to do the traffic counts in the last few weeks, obviously, because of the weather. So you'll probably see some counters out there, et cetera. So that is getting looked at and updated. So there's a smaller one for Tractor Supply, and then there's a larger corridor study that's been undertaken. It'll probably be, you know, closer to the end of the year when that study's done. But we know as far as building out the town master plans, et cetera, that we need to continually do these updates. So it's, we are doing that, and you can feel free to check in with me. I am Steve Mountain, Town Engineer. And, you know, ask any questions or anytime you have a question, just give me a comment.
Steve, is the state going to hold into whatever the outcome of that study is, or that they can still make their own conclusion, correct?
DOT, yes. Yeah, they'll, they'll either accept, you know, whatever comes out of that traffic study, or say, no, we don't agree with it. Either way, it's up to New York State Department of Transportation what improvements can or don't get done.
And just to, when Steve's referring to site plan, that's not tonight, that's happening at future meetings, isn't it, just in terms of dividing this on a piece of paper into the four lots at this point?
Yes, sir.
Jeff Housnik, I'm Chrissy Lamb, 8283 Lewiston. I've been there for over 40 years, and unless you've been living under a rock, you knew the road was going to, was planned to come through and around Lewiston. And it's also planned to continue on across Lewiston and come out here somewhere at some point in the future. As far as I'm concerned, I fill it all up behind me, come by my place out, and I can move to a state where you can have gas stoves, gas cars. Because I'm ready to go. This state is just getting ridiculous with the people that are in control, and it's not going to change.
We should bring him to the DOT meeting.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Ron Schmidt. 51 years ago, I lived in that area, open spot right there. Now I live down the road. I've been on that road for over 50 years. That is a traffic nightmare. I would never let my kids get out on that road on a bicycle. And the fact is, there are neighbors right there in that area that will not let their kids on bicycles. They bring them down to the church to ride in the traffic in the parking lot to get their exercise, because you start cranking like crazy to come to the hill. Then you go over, and then they really fly. And then coming back from Oakfield, they're coming, trucks are coming to 80, 90, 100 mile an hour, especially these truck rockets. You're going to have, you're going to need something, or everybody's going to get flattered there. And the part that worries me about that whole road is when that's finished, you're going to have the tractor trailers coming off the thruway, bypassing Veterans Drive and Park Road and all them, and coming clear down there and trying to make the turn. And unless you redo that road, they don't have a way to get out onto the highway, because you don't have a wide road there.
Thank you. Yes?
And Jeff Housnik again. I just, I've always been, I've been, like I say, I've been there 40-some years. When my kids were little, I've always been the type of person that's, what's the worst that can happen? My kids were never allowed to play in the front yard because, you know, my gas meter used to be out by the road. That was run over twice. My mailboxes have been run over. I mean, it doesn't matter where you live. I was almost killed back in 89 by a drunk driver. There are just so many people on the road, and accidents just happen everywhere. But yeah, I mean, we got to get these, we do need probably have the sheriffs there more catching these guys coming from Oakfield and even going out towards Oakfield. The sheriff's got to run more speed traps down there.
I wish they could. I live on Route 5, and I could say the very same things you're saying. When I moved there, it wasn't like that, and it is now. And I wish the sheriff could do more, but they've got a budget, too. They're doing what they can. Everybody's doing what they can to keep people safe.
I had a friend who was a deputy, and I told him, I'm sitting in my driveway. He did. One of the people he caught was a state trooper going to work 60 mile an hour in their 40s on the road. Of course, the trooper didn't give a take.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, from a DOT standpoint, from a transportation.
Could you stand up, please?
Sorry. Is there any possible way to widen in the future to put a turn lane like other major highways here in town have? So it's easier to make, you know, the left or the right to get in and out?
Yeah, that's, again, that's DOT. And so the traffic study, probably the corridor study that Steve's referring to, is going to make certain recommendations. And then it's up to DOT whether or not to adopt those recommendations and see if the money is there obviously to do that. So it's, yeah, I keep saying the same answer, that it's completely up to the state DOT as to whether they do that. But they are, you know, the town did initiate a traffic study for this. And I just wanted to mention, I mean, there's a, there are guidelines for when a traffic study is actually required and when it's discretionary, when it's not required. In 20 years, I've seen very few traffic studies for historically Tractor Supply. So the town took it upon its own initiative to do one for that and one for the entire corridor, which is really above what is required legally.
The state is not looking to make it look any easier for anybody. Look what they did to Oak Street. Look what they did to Ellicott Street.
Yeah, well, they're also, they're also not going to encourage when people are saying bicycles. I understand the, you know, the concern, I wouldn't let my kids on any state highway.
But they made a bike path on Ellicott, on the state highway.
Those are a little, I would never. Unless they're segregated, which they're not, I know, the update thing and press and that would.
This gentleman was first, and then you're second. Go ahead.
Kathy, being that case that they're going to do a DOT study, is the planning board waiting for approval until the study comes back?
We aren't making a decision tonight. What we could do, if the board wants to, is approve the subdivision, which is just the subdivision of the lots. We aren't making a decision on anything else tonight.
The site plan will be at a future meeting, and when we actually get the, we'll have that study before we make that.
You'll wait for the study until you make the study.
So that final study.
Well, yeah, this will probably be at our next meeting, and we will review it. So you're welcome to come and hear it at the next meeting also.
Yeah, like I said, this is the fourth step in the process, so nothing, if this gets approved, it just divides us on a piece of paper. We can't go and start building.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Art Marshall, 8271 Lewiston Road. I may be late to the game here, but could you describe the process and the timeline that you're looking to accomplish here? What are the steps in the timeline to get this done?
The approval steps?
One would like to break ground.
Just a general.
Break ground in the fall.
In the fall.
In the fall.
So everything has to be approved quickly, but what are the, what are the steps?
The steps would be, there's several different jurisdictions that we have to go through, but when we're talking about just simply the town, we applied, and we submitted three applications. We submitted an application for two area variances. We submitted an application for this subdivision here. We submitted a site plan application. Those started the review process. First step was to go to the county planning board, who has to make a recommendation. They recommended in favor of the approval of those, of those. The, we then went to the zoning board of appeals, as you referred to earlier, and they granted these two area variances. The third step is the subdivision approval. There's two parts to that. Preliminary plat, which has been approved, just this rough sketch, if you will. And then we come for what's, for today, which is called final plat. So final plat is just on the subdivision alone, and it's just making sure that once they look at the preliminary plat, if there's any changes or tweaks, we would bring it back for the final plat. So what happens with this, once it's approved, is that a copy of this is going to be signed, and it's going to be recorded in the county clerk's office, just like your deeds are. And then what will happen is that the second it's recorded, this one property will become four properties with different tax ID numbers, et cetera. So that's where we're at today. The fifth step in the process is the site plan, which is probably the most crucial, which is why it's at the end. And the site plan is going to look at, you know, things like what you're referring to in terms of the traffic and those things. So we're not yet to do full approval of the project. We still have site plan to go. Independent of that, sorry?
Talking about four lots, where are the four lots?
Two-acre lot here. There's no proposed use for it. My assumption is this is going to be a commercial use because it's right on Route 63. Okay? But this is, this would have to go through full site plan approval subsequently. Second lot is five acres. This is Tractor Supply. Third lot is about 10 acres. There's no use for this yet. My assumption is it's going to continue to be farmed and it'll remain in the Call family. And then the fourth lot is 32 acres, same thing. No proposed use whatsoever. The county has asked us for a conceptual plan as part of the county review process. We have a conceptual plan, which is the one you said you already had, which I just gave you again, which shows commercial here and then a residential-type use here with the line of green space and walking paths and that type of thing. That's simply a concept, because when we're looking at an entire property, we need to put a concept out there, and that's how some of these environmental reviews are done. So let's just suppose in the future, if this board approves this based upon a traffic study, and in the future, something is going to come in here 30 years, who knows, that's just much more traffic-intensive. I have no idea if that's going to happen. You're saying, what would have to happen is they have to reopen those traffic studies, do them again. So right now, all that's being proposed, all that's going to be built is the Tractor Supply and the road up to the Tractor Supply. That's all.
And regardless, all access to any of the properties that might have been featured on that road, not off of Route 63?
Correct, yes. Yeah, this road will continue up. It actually is going to go over.
Yes.
According to your guide.
Excuse me, sir.
You own the hood, what?
Uh, we have a, so my client's name is Hicks Nederker, which is a developer out of Alabama who develops Tractor Supply nationwide. I'm local, I'm from West New York. But they have a contract to buy the five acres and the two acres. They have no use for the two acres, because if they did, we have it in front of these boards. It's just going to be out there until somebody finds a user for it, the five acres of Tractor Supply.
And then the others? So that's one and two, right?
It's one and two.
Who owns three? Still the Calls?
Well, the Calls own all of them right now. But eventually, the plan is for the company I represent to own these two. The Call family will retain ownership of all of these. And whether it's in two years, 20 years, or 50 years, you know, these could be developed. I believe the intention is to continue farming this entire property except for these seven acres up front.
Okay, and so with the map right there, is it all the way up to the top? That's what DOT is looking at, because it's the classic phase, because once it's there, you know, they're not going to pull it back out again. So when they do the DOT study, they can't be, oh, it's just this big. They really need to look at it to say, it's going to go all the way around, and what are the implications of that traffic study? So what are they doing? They're doing, they're doing it, is it going to be the whole way around? Or phases?
There's two studies. One is for Tractor Supply. And then the other is the bigger one, assuming that everything is built out in the future.
But if you guys are planning on breaking ground in the summer, that's assuming everything's been okay. And environmental studies, I didn't hear one of those.
There was a, well, that's, that's part of these approvals, it's called SECA, it's New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. What happens with that is we submit a large form called an environmental assessment form, which goes through the entire, you know, all the different particulars of the property that gets sent out to every involved and interested agency. So, you know, beyond DOT, it would have went out to the New York State Historic Preservation to see if there's any archaeological resources. It would have went out to DUC for fish and wildlife and wildlife type things. It goes out to a number of places. They then respond to the town and give their comments. And the comments were essentially, we don't see any negative.
Already done.
It's already done. That part's done. And then this board issues what's called a negative declaration. But with the negative declaration for SECA was for, was essentially the subdivision, a concept of what we're doing, and the Tractor Supply. So if for some reason, in 20 or 30 years, whenever it's going to be, something up here is going to be very high-traffic generating, that will be reopened by the board at that time. And they'd have to look at that again and do, and look at it independently, because right now, we don't know what the traffic will be on these uses. The road itself will only go this side. It's only going to go to the Tractor Supply store.
Right.
So half of the road is going to be built sectionally.
Hey, are there any more questions? Yes?
I have one more question. The Tractor Supply that currently exists in the Town of Batavia, why is, why are they wanting to redevelop and move, or is it going to be another?
That's not, that's not part of our hearing tonight. Our hearing is strictly on the subdivision. What they decide to do is their business. Is there anyone else?
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
He may know this, or he may not. When they were doing the surveying of that lot last summer, did they pull the pipes from the gas well without being there? Because it's right underneath here, where you're building.
That's, the engineers would have reviewed all that. I don't know the answer.
And the other one is, does it matter whether those fields are tiled? Does that, I know one are u, but that's what happens if they build something in the middle for them to tile?
Yeah, that's more of a site plan issue. I'm not trying to push off. I barely passed math, I'm an attorney. I'll have the engineer come in, come in for the site plan meeting, and he can answer all those questions. I don't want him to speak out of turn.
Steve, can you help with that?
Yeah, Steve's the one.
Yeah, the stormwater, this private will have its own stormwater system.
Yeah, yeah, the stormwater, this, this project will have its own stormwater system. If, um, the rest of the property, as it's developed in the future, would look at all the stormwater. You know, we do know that it's tiled and, you know, there's potential plans. There could be a, a community stormwater system. But either way, the, the stormwater also has to meet the state regulations.
It's going to go through what's called a speed improvement by D E C.
Well, I know they, they, they tiled the farm that land was on many years ago for farming purposes. I don't know where the water goes to. Because you're, you're almost on bedrock there.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Just, I mean, our engineers got to do.
Any more comments or questions, things that can help us? Okay, I'll leave this open. So if someone thinks of something while we go on to the next hearing, we can, we can talk about it. I won't close the hearing yet. So the next hearing is an application for a special use permit by Oak Orchard Solar in care of New Leaf Energy for the installation of a solar system. Kim, do you want to read that?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application by Oak Orchard Solar III LLC in care of New Leaf Energy Incorporated for a special use permit to construct and operate a five megawatt AC ground-mounted utility-grade solar energy system at 7755 Oak Orchard Road in the town of Batavia. This is located on approximately an 83 acre parcel, 4 dot dash 1 dash 16 in the town of Batavia, Genesee County, New York. The land is ag rez. Said hearing will be held at the Batavia Town Hall, 38, 33 West Main Street Road, Batavia, New York, on March 7th, 2023 at 7:10 PM, at which time, all interested persons will be heard. If you cannot attend, you may send your comments and concerns to the chairman at Kay Jazinski, at thetownofbatavia.com before the hearing. A copy of the application is on file at the town hall for review by order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board. Kathleen Jazinski, Chairman.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak on the new proposed Oak Orchard Solar Farm?
Would you like me to give an overview first?
Yes. Unless there's no one here that wants to hear.
No, I want to hear.
They do want to hear. Go ahead. They do.
My name is Mark Kenward. I've been before you before with Southern Solar Projects. I'm with Erd and Anthony Consulting Engineers. With me tonight is Will Mieffs of New Leaf Energy. New Leaf Energy was formerly a part of Borrego Solar and they have done three other solar sites in the town of Batavia. This is our first one with the spinoff company, New Leaf Energy. The proposed project will construct and operate a five-megawatt ground-mounted solar energy system at 7755 Oak Orchard Road in the town of Batavia. It's located on the east side of Oak Orchard Road, Route 98, and it's approximately a half a mile south of Batavia-Alba Town Line Road. This is Route 98, north is up. Batavia-Alba Town Line Road is just off the map here. The throughway is another mile and a half south here. This is an 83 and a half acre site. It is currently actively tilled farmland with some forested areas. And there's already an existing 12.4 acre solar array located approximately 1,450 feet back from Oak Orchard Road. This is the existing solar array. And as you can see, the farmland is still actively tilled around it in the front area here where we are proposing this newest, this new solar array. The project's site area will encompass approximately 20.9 acres, which includes 20.4 acres of fenced array, about half an acre of access driveway, which is in here. But the driveway will share the entrance down here at the south edge of the site with the existing entrance to this rear solar, this existing solar array. Four, right now, four new utility poles with aerial electrical wires are proposed for the interconnect it to the national grid out on Route 98. This is out in the front area here. The interconnect right now is parallel, sits back from the road, behind the access road, and is parallel to the road. It will interconnect with a pole. The current interconnection for the existing solar array is here. The next pole up will act as, the next pole to the north will be the interconnection, point of interconnection for the, for this new solar array. We have reduced the number of poles from six to four. I'm still working with them to get it down to three.
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 Like we have on other sites.
Yes.
The proposed site layout has been designed and laid out in accordance with the Town of Batavia zoning code. Solar energy systems are allowed by zoning and special use permits in accordance with the town zoning code and are subject to site plan review by the town planning board. And this is part of that site plan review process. It's also part of the special use permit. The town's zoning standards in this agricultural residential zone including, include lot size. The property shall meet certain setbacks, otherwise there's no minimum lot size. But the required setbacks are as follows. Front yard setback is 200 feet and we are providing at least 201 feet. The minimum side yard setback is 75 feet and at least 84 feet is provided on either side. I think the, the minimum, the 84 is up here on the north side, I believe. The minimum 84, which exceeds the 75, except by the town. The minimum rear setback is 75 feet and there's at least 970 feet because this lot extends all the way from Oak Orchard Road over to State Street Road. It is divided by a creek back here. And that front, that portion of the lot fronts on State Street Road. Access to the rest of the site is through this, this access driveway here at the south side. The maximum allowed height is 15 feet from grade level. The proposed maximum height is 10 feet plus or minus to the top of the panels and equipment cabinets. Town does have a requirement about lot coverage in their, in their zoning code. So as I said before, this, I think I said before, this total lot area is 83 and a half acres. And the town zoning code says a canotick seat 50% or 41.75 acres. So the existing solar array is 12.4 acres. The proposed solar array is 20.9. So the combined solar array coverage, including the driveway outside the fence, is 33.32 acres, which is just under 40% lot coverage. Other town requirements include proof of national grid coordination, electrical diagrams, decommissioning plans, and preliminary, preliminary equipment specification sheets. Construction of the facility is environmentally friendly. Only one tree and stump is proposed to be removed. That's in the middle of the site right in here. I don't know why it was left there, Kim, do you?
Yes, but Paul said that's God's tree. He left it there.
Thank you. Seven-foot high chain link fence will enclose this new solar array in electrical equipment pads. Upon completion, the site area within the fence and immediately outside the fence, we planted with a pollinator mix, which right now, based on town review comments, is going to be a mix of clover, a seven-seed mix of clover. Landscaping in the form of tree plantings is proposed along the fence line facing Oak Orchard Road. And that is, this line of green trees here and here. Tree plantings will be placed in a manner, tree plantings, which amount to about 153 trees, consist of, consists of two staggered rows of six to seven-foot high trees at a 12-foot spacing. Approximately 14 boxwood shrubs are also proposed to screen the equipment pad that is outside the fence, part of the interconnection. During construction, the project will generate approximately 50 vehicle trips per day, which is 25 arriving and 25 exiting. This includes construction-related deliveries and employees. Once the project is in, is in operation, it will generate no discernible noise to neighboring receptors, no adverse glare, and no traffic. There is no nighttime site lighting. Main activity is limited to mowing up to two times per year and an occasional visit by electrical service technician. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Your name, please.
John Oler. I live on Route 98. How close to the house in the northwest corner?
There? Well, the setback is 84 feet to the property line. And I would guess that it's probably about another 20 feet to the house.
Okay.
And the setback is measured to the edges of the panels.
Gotcha.
So we're roughly 100 feet.
The trees you're going to plant, they're parallel to Route 98. Will there also be an elevated person berm?
We have a, a small berm for topsoil stores proposed on the north, on the, along the north fence lines that face west, along here and here. We haven't proposed planting trees on the berm. I find small berms.
Probably wouldn't allow it because through our experience, they end up dying because they'll give up water.
Exactly. Thank you.
We've had those issues on other.
Too much drainage.
Yep.
Okay, water brings up another question. The boundary on the south of that project, that's the beginning of Spring Creek, which is a trout stream that goes all the way to Calabria from the trout entry.
That's, that's, no, Spring Creek feeds to Black Creek in the Virgin Swamp. Black Creek feeds to the Genesee River in Chi-Lai. The headquarters of Spring Creek are actually about at the sheriff's office.
On Google Maps, you can trace it all the way to Calabria.
Not this Spring Creek. I'm confident in that because I live in Byron. I, oh, I fish Spring Creek.
There is two Spring Creeks.
Yeah, that's correct. There are.
And the, the field that's proposed and the one that's already there, are they connected in any way? Are they in the same order?
No, they're different. They're going to be different, owned by different entities. Well, I won't say that for sure. New Leaf Energy is all about developing and getting approvals. They then, and, and this is all developed under a, an LLC. It could be the same company buys this once it's, once it's approved. It could be the same company that operates it. I wouldn't be surprised if they, they look at that as a good opportunity. But I, I, at this time, New Leaf is separate from the.
It's all calls, man. I just wondered.
Pardon?
It's all calls, ground. I just wonder if they were connected.
Yeah. What typically happens is there's a lease line around the fenced array and the access driveway. And that lease line is, that's what solar company leases from the Calls. And then that lease line is kind of like the boundary of the project, if you will.
Just to add, that's not so different than having two farmers, you know, working one piece of land, essentially. But we are going to market this project to the owner of, of this array since we are already working with them to amend their lease to share the access point for here. The first of 20 or 30.
Yep.
Okay, Jim?
John Galafetta, Batavia, New York. The last paragraph you read, did you say two mowings per year?
Yeah, approximately two mowings per year.
Well, I'll tell you, as far as I'm concerned, not five. The, the ones in East Pembroke look terrible. And I don't know how many mowing days were here, but two mowings in anybody's yard is, is not, is not maintained.
Well.
Not maintained.
It isn't intended to be maintained as a lawn, but more as a non-grazed meadow. And it's important to remember that when we seed these grays down, we seed them with a, with a pollinator-friendly seed mix so that it promotes bees and birds and butterflies and things like that. And mowing kind of takes that away, constant mowing takes that away.
So that, no, what, what I'm getting at is that's a mineral ton in the Batavia. And I don't think it has to look like a, a rag that is not maintained. If, if we were to take that into consideration, so I'm on record.
That's intentional. The, the pollinator-friendly mix is intentional. It's no different than having a vacant field with overgrown brush. It's, it's meant to be, you know, bee-friendly. Yeah, when we talked with, you know, land conservation in Cornell, they all said, you want to keep the mowings to a minimum. So we decided on two as a board previously because we don't want to kill the bees because these are already starting to get killed off.
But is anybody happy with, with that wildflower five in, in East Pembroke?
Well, they're, we're working on it, John.
There are dead trees or?
That is, that is, that's what we just mentioned about the term, John. Yeah, we just mentioned about the term. And that's something that, that the county office has been working on.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it. Dan's working on it.
Those will be ongoing for every issues on the first few solars that were approved, John. We've, since we've adopted the new code, it does change that a lot. And as far as the mowings underneath, they're not going to be doing as much. But as far as the exterior and the fencing and everything else, over on State Street, Five, Pearl Street, all of them, they, they're, they're, they're in rough condition around the fencing and some other areas on the property. But we really, in the first code that the Town of Batavia adopted, we really didn't have any teeth in that matter. Now we do and we're, we're keeping with it. And we're also working with a lot of these existing solar companies now. Now wouldn't be the time, but they will be planting new plantings, new trees, and different species of trees.
Okay.
Not doing the berms the way they did because we found that that did not work, obviously. So we are working with all of them, just so you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mine is more a question of, and probably neither one of you may not have been answered. You got an existing solar field there. When they built that, that was supposed to give however many kilowatts of whatever electricity. Over the two or three years that's operated, how efficient has that been?
I don't know the answer.
That's one thing they don't ever tell us in this county.
Well, let me, let me just say this one. They only work when the sun is shining. Why, they only work in daylight. They will work to some degree even in cloudy skies. But it's, as I said in the E A F, they, it's, it's daylight hours 365 days a year. And that's the best answer I can give you. Somebody once said.
They never work.
Somebody once told me.
It's closer to their potential or not.
Somebody once told me they're about, they're, they're 40%, 40 to 50% efficient.
You're what I thought.
But I, but then what's the measure? I don't know. What's that? What's the standard? I, I don't know.
Joe?
Um, where does this electricity go to? Who does it benefit? Not the Town of Batavia on this one, but it, does it benefit downstate or other states? And does it go, it goes out there?
It's connected directly to national grid and is part of their power supply for the local area, the local grid. I believe all, this one and all the others, well, I can't say for sure all the others, but I believe this one will feed the substation that's on, for off Frontelo Street by Genesee, over. What residents can do is on their electric bill, there's an option for them to choose green energies. And that gives them about a 10% discount on the, the electric usage part of your electric bill, which I will admit is not a lot because for me, my, my electric bill is, say, 100 bucks a month. And this seems like 45% of that is for my usage. It's 55% for the maintenance and the, the carriers costs, if you will. So it's not a huge benefit on your electric bill. But it does provide additional tax base to the town, all the taxing entities. And a pilot agreement is part of the requirements for getting this final, final approval of this, which, a pilot agreement is not a break, it's not enough for you to break into taxes. It's an agreement about the value that, the value of the taxable income that can be generated from it for a 20-year period, I believe, right? So it does expand the tax base for the Town of Batavia, for your county, and for the schools that are in the taxing entities. And I always say, the advantage of a solar array is it does instead teach the school and it requires no services from the town or county. So to me, it's a, it's kind of a plus. Put it in the plus column. I won't say it's a win, but I'll put it in the plus column.
I have another question. Will these solar panels turn or rotate when it follows the sun?
These ones are fixed tilt.
Just pointing something.
Can anyone, anyone else?
Kathy, for your, your knowledge, a pilot, for those who don't know, is payment and due tax. This, this tends to be a lump sum of, of money one time from the developer.
Well, it's an agreed tax schedule, I think, is what it amounts to. It's a community, post-community benefits agreement, I think, is the one time. And that's also a part of this that.
Right, that's the second term.
They're working to get negotiated. I don't know where that's.
We'll be, we'll be going for the I D A next.
Right.
And that's the next part.
And no action is being taken tonight on this, on this project. We just wanted the public hearing to get input for us. Okay, I'm going to open up the third public hearing, but that doesn't mean you can't ask a question later. I'll give you one more chance. I'd love to open up the application for a special use permit by Joshua Piscatelli for a self-storage facility on a vacant lot on Lewiston Road, Town of Batavia. Could you read the notice, please?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Batavia Planning Board regarding an application for a special use permit by John Piscatelli for a self-storage facility on a vacant lot, approximately 3.9 acres on Lewiston Road, Town of Batavia, New York. This land is zoned agricultural residential. Tax map ID number is 3 dot dash 1 dash 18. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, at the Batavia Town Hall at 7:15 PM, at which time, all interested persons will be heard. Written comments will be accepted prior to that date. You may email the chairman at kayjazinski@townofbatavia.com. By order of the Town of Batavia Planning Board, Kathleen Jazinski, Chairman.
Would you gentlemen step out in the hallway to discuss that, please? Would you guys go out in the hallway to discuss that? I mean, it's quite all right to do it, but we can't hear. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone here to, to comment on Mr. Piscatelli's self-storage?
Is there an address on the list?
It doesn't have an address.
We have an address, just a text.
What's the address?
I can tell you that 775, John Motz from Batavia. 7754 is right across the street because that's where I live. So this is a lot directly across from me. My concern is, you're coming over a hill there. There's a, a very limited sightline as you're coming out of Oakfield, coming toward. There's a, a very limited sightline as you're coming out of Oakfield, coming towards Batavia, for additional traffic coming in and out of that lot. That really needs to be looked at because people don't go through there slow. It's 55, and that must be optional because most people are way above that at that point in time. And it's kind of a weird lot. It goes kind of like 45 degrees to the road. So I don't, I don't know what the, I haven't seen any pictures of where it's going to set. But it's a house on the north side, house across street, the other side of the, um, street's got houses on it. So it kind of tucks back in behind the houses on the north side. So I'd like to see what they're proposing.
We have some information here if you'd like to look at it.
Would you be a little more specific about where this is?
Um-
Do you think the other way around in the Tavie Oakfield Town Line Road?
It's about a-
Okay.
It's about a four mile-
Application, oh, go ahead then.
-mile from the Batavia Oakfield Town Line Road on the right-hand side, there's the big fields there. It's in that location over there. Josh is on vacation. He did let me know about the planning board and all that. If there is any questions, that hopefully I can assist. And if not, worst-case scenario, if we don't get everything we need, that he's asking that you would table it instead of denying, obviously. So he would have time to answer any questions.
When we get to that part of the agenda, we will talk about that. But I would, we appreciate your comments, and Dan Lane can help you understand those. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
I live at Stop Stop and Night. You wish to roll-
What's your name?
John DeSanto. I live right across the street from this. Do you guys have a sheet so we can see it too?
That's what they're doing right now.
Because I really don't want it across the street from me. It just, I pay nothing taxes, and I take care of my place, and I don't want to see that across the street. Plus, that road is very dangerous. You got motorcycles going over 100 miles an hour. I see many accidents in front of my house. They, these people pass like you wouldn't believe. I just, I don't, I don't want to see it. Stop Stop and Night. I pay enough taxes on us.
The planning board had a presentation on this at our last meeting, so we understand what we're talking about. I know you don't in particular, but Mr. Piscatelli is not here tonight. And if there's some questions we can't resolve, we can table it. So does anyone have any other questions, concerns? How about going back to the subdivision before I close that hearing?
I just wish they wouldn't decide anything until they're done with this traffic study.
Well, we won't. We won't.
Well, Steve said they aren't going to do a traffic study till fall.
No.
The subdivision-
Second one.
The traffic study has to be done.
The second one is a comprehensive study for when it's fully built out. We're, all we're willing to be looking at as part of site plan review is for the buildup of phase one. And that, that traffic study will be complete by the next meeting.
But that's what we're talking about. We really want to look at what-
Okay, I am going to close the, a public hearing on the subdivision for tractor supply. Kim, you got the time?
I got time.
Okay. I'm also going to close the public hearing on the application for Oak Orchard Solar unless the- Yeah, unless someone has another question on it. Concerns, anything we should know? Okay, I'm going to close that one. Now, on Joshua Piscatelli, I'm going to close that public hearing, unless someone has something more they want to add. Okay, I'm going to close that. The three public hearings are now closed, and the planning board will go into the regular agenda. I'll now call the planning board meeting to order. Roll call, please, Kim.
Palmer Casey.
Here.
Paul McCullough.
Here.
Don Pertridge.
Here.
Jonathan Law.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Here.
Brooks Holly. Brittany Whitcup. Here. Jennifer Zambito.
Here.
Kathy.
Here. We'll designate Brittany as a voting member tonight in place of Brooks Holly, who was not able to make it. Did everyone get the minutes from the February 21st meeting? A motion by John Wong, who's a second, by Palmer Casey. Any additions or corrections? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Now, this is a time to comment on agenda items. We've already had our public hearings, but you still have this time to comment if you'd like to. If anyone has any comments. We try to bring as many people in as we can into our meetings, so we, we appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you. The first thing on our agenda is the request for a four-lap subdivision by Hextneticar Companies for the tractor supply store and three lots that do not have proposed uses at this time. We are only voting on the subdivision, the division of the four parcels. We are not approving tractor supply. We're not doing anything else at this time.
Michael Walker.
A motion by-
Brittany.
Brittany, sir, a second. Second by Paul McCullough.
So we're essentially approving the roadway, right? So we're land-locking.
I was going to refer that to Steve Mountain. Is, is Steve Mountain here?
We don't approve the road. We're land-locking.
What was the question?
We, we need him in here, Sharon.
What was the question?
Uh, are we approving the roadway?
The question is-
We, yes.
The roadway is one of the-
One of the lots is, is the roadway. Everyone shouldn't talk at lots. Direct your-
Five flats, right?
Yeah.
Direct your questions to the chairman.
That road is considered a five flat, right?
Direct your questions to the chairman. Okay, they, they want to know if the roadway will be approved, and that will be one of the four lots.
No.
Five lots. Okay, explain it, please.
The, a public road is not considered a lot, even though it is a separate thing, if you will. But when you approve the subdivision, you are approving the phase one of the roadway. So that is approved for, for Tom's fact that they were calling for you on this one question.
So Steve, my question was, with approving the subdivision, are we, we're essentially approving the road construction with no use because we don't want to land lock lots behind there, correct?
Yeah. Again, the roadmap, the road construction, everything comes to the site plan.
We would just love to get a public improvement permit from the town after all this to, you know, make sure it's the stack, the whole thing, binding and all that.
That's right, yeah. The road has to be aligned.
Right. Subdivision map for the county is going to show that phase one of the road. And it's going to show it to be dedicated to the town, and it'll be a deed to the town, of course.
So essentially, regardless of how the outcome is, the road has to be built, otherwise we're land-locking.
Correct. Yeah, we have, we have-
That's why it's a flat. Yeah.
And that, that actually was my initial question, too, because if we don't, if the road isn't completely built, you're going to land lock at least one of the parcels because you're, you're proposing originally a stop at the tractor supply.
It'll be the big lot on the one side, and then the other off.
It did, it did, okay, yeah, that's fine.
There'll be a turnaround there.
Okay.
Okay, this went to Genesee County Planning, and they approved it with some modifications. This is regarding the subdivision. The required modifications are, the applicant obtained a permit from New York State DOT for the proposed road and intersection. Given that the applicant will be disturbing more than an acre of land, the applicant completes a stormwater pollution prevention plan and obtains a stormwater permit for construction activity from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, DEC. And also, given that the project is located in a, in a shippo district as to the archeological sensitive area, the applicant obtained the documentation from the State Historic Preservation Office as to the projects impacted. With these modifications, it should pose no significant county-wide or inter-community impact. So now we'll go back. Do we have a motion? We have our motion in a second. Okay, are there any more questions from the board? On the subdivision only. Okay, roll call, please.
Brittany.
Yeah.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Palmer Casey.
Yes.
Don Pertridge.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Steve.
Yep.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, the subdivision's been approved. They will be back at the next meeting. You're all welcome to come and listen. And our agenda will be on the website, the town's website. Or you could call me and I'll forward one to you, or email me, whatever. We'll make sure you get one if you want one, okay? Steve, did you have anything else? Okay. A next item, next item on our agenda is an application for a special use permit for the self-storage facility on Lewiston Road. I did not have a street address, and that's why I only put Lewiston Road on it. Someone did have a street address.
No, there is not.
Across the street from the law.
There's not a street address right now.
He just said an empty lot. So that's what I put down. Okay, tonight, we would only, we would vote on the special use permit, and we have to do a short form seeker.
Kathy, I would like to make a motion to table this, and to call the owners here to explain any questions, and to get an address for the property.
There wasn't an address. He told us that, that county was working on getting an address. It's just the tax map right now.
I still, I agree with table, as I would say.
Okay, but then we have a motion in a second to table this. A motion by Paul McCullough, seconded by Steve Tanner. Any questions on the tabling?
No discussion.
No discussion. All right, roll call, please, Kim.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Steve Tanner.
Yes.
Palmer Casey.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Upstate.
Brittany?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Okay, this will not be acted on tonight. It will be on our next agenda, and we will have all the information we need at that time. Okay? So now we're down to the zoning officer. I think he's making a presentation in the other room. Oh, we're not doing anything on it. That's right. We have the application for the special use permit for Oak Orchard Solar, and we have not done the seeker yet on that. That'll be done at our next meeting. So we've got a pretty full meeting next time. Okay, next zoning officer, he is out of the room right now. Chairman, report. I really have nothing to report tonight, except we have a big meeting next, next meeting day. Anybody have any questions, anything? Brett?
No, roll call.
No, roll call.
No.
Adjourned. Adjourned by Brett, seconded by Paul McCullough. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.